I'd like to call the meeting to order. If you would all please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic, which stands our nation under God, indivisible, and eternal.
I'm not sure if we have any board members online tonight, but we're going to do roll call the way we usually do, just in case.
All right, so again, we'll do attendance, roll call vote, and then if we don't have anyone online, all votes can be just by a show of hands, but let's do roll call first. Kristin?
Yeah.
David G.
Here.
Annie.
Here.
Tyler.
Here.
Yep, awesome, thank you Tyler. Christine.
Here.
Kathy.
Here.
Patty, I think just came in.
Here.
Rebecca.
Here.
Betty.
Here.
Sean.
Here.
Kelsey.
Here.
Snuck right into. David T.
Here.
All right, and as May had sent us a message saying that she would be in later, she's a student rep, and Erica said that's the message saying he couldn't be here tonight, so. Great, we're good, so we will do, all votes will be through roll call, so, just so people know.
So, good evening, and thank you all for coming tonight. Before we get started, I'd like to remind everyone of our agreed upon core values. Those are integrity, perseverance, family, respect, collaboration, and trust. These values support our mission of being a caring school community dedicated to excellence, as well as our vision of being safe, dynamic learning communities where people of all ages will think, aspire, and participate as responsible citizens in an ever-changing global society. As you heard Jay say, this, this meeting is being held in person as well as in Zoom. So I just want to talk a little bit about citizen comments and public participation, which is number six on the agenda tonight for non-budget related items. In accordance with RSU 38 policy BEDH, public participation at school board meetings, the following guidelines will be followed. For those attending via Zoom, you will notice that the microphones will be muted except during the identified portions of public comments at this meeting. Again, number six on tonight's agenda. If you're viewing on Zoom and would like to speak during the public comment time, please use the chat feature to notify Diane McGregor, and she will communicate with me. In-person speakers, please sign up on the sheet at the clipboard by the door. All speakers, please identify yourself with your first and last name and the town that you live in. Priority will be given to individuals who live or pay taxes in our member communities, immediate family members of enrolled students, and employees of RSU 38. Individuals that do not have one of these direct connections to our district may or may not be given permission to speak at the discretion of the board chair. We ask that speakers limit their comments to three minutes, and if someone who has a similar view of yours speaks ahead of you, please reference their comment rather than repeating the same ideas over again. We really want to hear from all of our stakeholders, and ask that you be respectful with your constructive comments to the board. I would also like to clarify how we address concerns of the public. In accordance with RSU number 38 policy BEDH, we welcome all respectful comments and concerns, and we ask that you do not use any derogatory comments or use names of or identifying comments of any district personnel. We cannot discuss specific personnel matters in public setting, but we can listen to broad concerns that folks may have. All speakers are to address the chair and direct questions or comments to a particular board members only with approval of the chair. The board will hear and record your comments and questions, but will not debate the matters at this meeting. Board members' questions must be addressed through the chair. Following the meeting, we'll take time to research and gather information on the matter, and at the next board meeting, or sooner, we will follow up with information on the issue. As always, the public is invited to call the superintendent with any issues or concerns. So I do want to say a couple of things. First of all, I'd like to welcome the town officials that are here with us tonight. We really, we really appreciate you all being here. Bob, if you want to come sit up at the black table? Yeah, come on up, you, you might need a microphone. So I'm going to ask that you, if you're going to speak, the towns, the town folks, if you could just grab a microphone and speak into the microphone, just so that the, the people that are on Zoom can hear. And if there are any town officials on Zoom, you, there's one, okay? So what we'll ask you to do is you'll be invited to be a panelist, and you'll have to accept being a panelist, and then you'll be able to participate in the conversations by raising your hand, there's that little hand raising icon on Zoom. So, without further ado, I would like to maybe do some introductions of the folks that we have here, our town officials and our representative. So, who would like to start? How about we go on that, that side?
Me?
No, Bob, is it Bob?
Yeah.
Bob Gasper, Selectman Manchester.
All right.
You're on.
Hello, my name is Dennis Price, and I'm on the Select Board in Reed Field.
Hello, everybody, I am Sean Keegan from the Select Board in Reed Field also.
Catherine Mills Woodson, same place.
Amy Kushman Black, Select Board in Wayne.
Great.
I'm Dan Shakori, State Representative for Hollowell, Manchester, and West Gardner.
Bob Grignier, Chair of the Select Board in Mount Vernon.
Great, again, welcome all of you, and thank you very much for coming. We're trying to work together on all of this, on the budget, and everything that we, we want to discuss with you folks would be great. So the first thing that we, we want to just talk about for a few minutes is any of the bills that are going to the Education Committee that might be of interest to RSU 38, that might impact our district. First, I'm going to ask the board, I sent out all the bills today, I don't know if you had a chance to go over them, there are a lot. But if anyone has any questions or comments for Dan about any of the bills that, that I sent out today, you could, now's the time to have a discussion. Go ahead.
I think it was LD 98, I thought it was great that we raised the age to 22 on that. Wonderful, it was a special, I'm sorry, the special, was a law regarding special education law, and it simply, it's just a comment, I don't really have a question.
Okay.
The comment was, it was great that the age was raised from 20 to 22, so it was more inclusive.
So that is a proposed bill, and, and that will go through the, first it goes through the committee, and then it will go to the full legislature for a yea or nay, and then before it becomes statute.
But I'll definitely pass your, your comment on to folks I go on the committee, I'm not on the Education Committee, but.
Okay. Any other, any other, and, and anything from any of the board members on any of the education? Oh, great, oh, good. I just had a few questions about, it's LD 385, which is a resolve to direct the Department of Education to examine alternative metrics for determining the disadvantaged student factor in the school funding formula. I just wondered what and who, what are those metrics going to be, and who's going to determine that, I'm not sure if you know, but.
I don't, but I can look, I can look into that.
Okay.
Can I, I can.
That'd be great.
Get back to you on things, but my, my knowledge of what they're doing, the Education Committee, I'm on Health and Human Services, so I don't know exactly what they're doing, but I can check.
And some of them cross over too.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah. But I think at some point, hopefully, some of these will come to the full legislature, so. So. The other, the other question that I had was about LD 515, which is an act to require school board approval of superintendent rules and administrative procedures. And I just wondered what, just to, for your information, the Maine School Board Association, of which I am a member, opposed that rule because they felt that that was too much oversight from the superintendent, and just too many administrative procedures, so just.
Micro reaction.
Yeah, exactly. And, let's see. This other, the other one that I had was LD 889, which is similar to the one that I just talked about, an act to better support the educational attainment of low and moderate income communities by providing additional funding to certain school administrative units. So the question is, what does that mean? You know, where's the additional funding come, how do you determine what school units will get that, are they?
Well, it's, it's hard, I know that they, there are always attempts to tweak with the school funding formula. Because it's a very imperfect tool, and like I looked before I came out tonight, and it looks like you guys are only getting about another $70,000 in state aid this year, is that about right? Well, but, um, I know that they're putting into the formula, I think, an additional $50 million, so it seems like it's going somewhere.
Right, and, and that was our question, you know, like, how is this determined, what school administrative units will actually?
Yeah, and I, I don't know how that would change the school funding formula, and to be honest, the, I look at the school funding formula like the pink black box that they put money into, and they turn a crank, and it comes out, goes to different places, but I don't.
Sounds good.
Really understand it in its minutia.
Yeah. Well, thank you for that anyway, because the next one was an act to amend the school funding formula. As you said, there's a lot of.
But, but which LD is that, I can see.
It's nine, the one that, this one that I'm talking about now is 951.
951, okay.
And again, it's to create equity between municipalities by adding medium income to the formula. And again, that was a little bit different, but, but we're just interested in what does that mean? You know, what's, what, the median income of what, state, the county?
No, of the town, of the municipality, probably.
Just the municipality.
Maybe the district, or maybe the district, I don't know, but they, again, they're always trying to tweak it and make it fairer, but fairer for who?
Exactly. So the, the other few, the next one was 974, which was an act to establish minimum pay for educational technicians and other school support staff. I didn't, I don't know if there was a fiscal note that went along with that or not, but it, it, there were some questions around where would that money come from?
Well, beginning anyway, I would think, it would have to come from the state, now they may phase it out over time, but there, if, if the state doesn't pay for it upfront, at least, then it's a mandate, and if there's a mandate, it needs a two-thirds vote, and I don't think that would ever get a two-thirds vote, so.
Go ahead, Sean.
I'm very familiar with that bill, Senator Jim Libby's bill, I actually helped write it. It's, it'd be modeled exactly after how the law was for the teachers to move ed techs, I mean, you have ed techs getting paid less than someone working at Dunkin', no, that's a joke.
So it'd be like a tiered year?
Yep, same model, same exact model.
Okay, thank you. So the next one is LD 1022, which this might be interesting to, to you folks, is an, an act to allow school budget referendum day on the same day as primary elections. So we weren't really sure, like, who that might impact, why that might happen, what the intent of that was, I'm, you know, we just had some questions about that.
I'm surprised, we actually needed a bill to do that, because I think we've done that in our school district, RSU 2, and I used, I, I think they, they've always tried to time it that way.
And I think some do, but I think that the point is, and I don't really know for 100%, is that everybody would do it, you know, be allowed to do it if they wanted to, so I, we didn't, we needed some more information on that one. Does anybody from the, any of the municipalities, are you familiar with that, anything about that bill at all? No? No? We have another person from Mount Vernon, this is Anna Libby, thank you Anna for coming.
I think Dawn showed up as well, oh, that's right, I don't know what.
Oh, sorry, sorry. Dawn.
I can't see the ball.
Can't see that far either, but thank you for coming, and you're from Manchester, great, well, welcome. And I think that, oh, I had the question for David.
I had a question, but I wasn't sure why. And maybe I need to research it separately. I have, well, the towns got their mill rate.
My, oh, he's my.
As I understand it, the towns got the mill rate of what they have to pay towards the school increase, and I didn't like that, and so I, I don't understand how that's justified or.
Well, again, that's part of the school funding formula, and that, that you have, you know this, you have to make the minimum, but I don't know how they determine the original mill rate in the first place.
Yeah, it seemed, and anyone can correct me on this, but it seemed to me that it was tacked on to the way it's already been calculated, and, you know, from a layman's perspective, the state has been wonderfully paying 55%, and, but now they've changed the calculation so that the town's part is bigger. It, it didn't feel right to me, I.
I understand that.
So, go ahead, Sean. Someone else can correct, I'm probably going to get corrected, but isn't it like 630,000 more for RSU 38?
Six hundred and eight.
Eight, almost 600.
Oh, I thought, yeah, 608,000 more.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And you're only getting 70 more from the state.
Yeah, right.
So, it's not, yeah.
Yeah.
The way, roughly, my understanding, and I may get corrected on this, and please feel free to correct me if you know, but the way I understand that that works is, you know the 45% isn't really 45%, because you, everybody goes over that, what you pay, but that's what, the mill rate is based on the total assessed value of the state to reach that 45% level that has to be paid, and I don't, but that's my understanding of how they do it, but I'm a positive, so don't.
Thank you.
Do you mean the 55%?
Yep. Yeah, I think you meant the 55.
Well, no, I meant 45, because that's the, what you guys have to pay, is the 45%.
Right.
Amount to raise, the 45%.
Oh, right.
Yeah.
Thank you for that clarification. Does anyone have anything to add to that? Do you have any, have you, have you got that information yet, as far as the mill rate having to be more this year, and the fact that we're getting less money from the state? Grab. Could you use a microphone, please? We have people on Zoom that can't hear unless we use the microphone.
Well, my understanding, and I'm sure you know this, also, most of you do, the state pays 55%, but obviously, it's not based on individual town, individual town, individual districts don't pay that. It's really, it's based on valuation, the number of students you have, and, that's the, the mill rate, there's a, a, a minimum mill rate that you have to, you have to have. But, you know, valuations change, as you well know, I mean, it's different for each of the towns in this district, and it's different throughout the state, so, you know, the calculations may change because other towns have different valuations, I don't know, I haven't looked at it enough, but, you know, it's kind of deceiving, it's not 55% of your budget, it's 55% of the state's portion.
Yeah, and it's, it's spread across the whole state, so it's like there are what they call minimum receiver communities, that you just take that basic mill rate in, and it's more than what they have to spend on education altogether, the whole 100%, so they don't get anything, or they just get a minimum amount, and then there's other towns that get a lot more.
Wayne, Wayne's the minimum receiver, right? Not anymore, okay. Not with the minimum rate. Okay, okay. So any other comments or questions from the board? Sean?
I know Senator Hickman's heard this from me, but I want to do it in the, by official, the school board is, we've really got to look at the school bus bills, there's bills to correct, I mean, it's a, I, I didn't get to look at the list today, but I do look at those, but, I mean, it's, it's very unfortunate. Kids' field trips are at stake, that's part of education, because we don't have enough bus drivers. There are times in districts, I know, where kids can't get to school, and we really, I, you know, I know it's there, but we've really have got to look at that, and it's the first thing, it's kids getting to school, kids getting to sport and events, really, it's winners and losers being chosen, mom and dad can't bring them to a sporting event, they can't play, I mean, that's, unless another parent gives them a ride, and some parents don't have that. I mean, we're going to have a situation here next year where field hockey players are going to have to go to Winthrop with no transportation, and that's picking winners and losers, I have a big issue with that, and it's a statewide problem, and I think we all need to work together, and I know there's multiple bills to try to address that in multiple different ways.
Yeah, I was just seeing if I could find which, one of the bills, and I don't have it right on the top of my head, and I don't have it right in front of me, is to change the qualifications for bus drivers.
Right, it's to train, what that would do is training opportunities, so that a high school kid, even though they might not be able to, an 18-year-old might not be able to drive till they're 21, it would allow CTEs to offer training for those students, because if you catch people early, it's semi, well, it's not semi, it's proven, they may do that late, a little later on in life, and if they could do it for free, and then you get them to 21, and then they can drive school bus, because 21's a federal law to drive school bus, not a state law, like, that would help, but we've got to figure out something, maybe add it to the school funding formula or something, because it's.
Great.
It's not fair.
So any of those bills that come forward that have to do with bus drivers would be great, if we could really get some support for that, because that is a big challenge that we've have, and, as well as other districts across the state. So are there any other challenges that anybody can, would like to talk about while we have our legislators here? No challenges? That's not true. Christine?
I mean, this is a, this is, you asked, and so I dug around, and I thought I would raise this. The state of New York is considering allowing, and this is not necessarily an education bill, but it's related to certification, so in the state of New York, school psychologists are allowed to practice independent of school districts in order to provide some mental health services in rural areas, is kind of the idea behind that, and I just wanted to point out that I work in a school, as well as serving on this school board, and so I see firsthand the mental health concerns that students bring to school with them, and it's, it's crushing, everybody knows that. If we would allow for additional mental health personnel in schools, and also for school psychologists in particular, to practice outside of the schools, independent of, you know, having to work with a clinical psychologist, we could bring a lot more mental health services to rural areas, which is, which is key, and it's the highest, one of the reasons that New York State is, is, they will pass that, that bill, so I just wanted to put that bug out there.
And there.
We have an overall shortage of mental health practitioners in general, in the.
Students in, I, I, so this is a rural district, I work in a different rural district, students wait, they, parents are being told that it's a two-year wait for them to see a psychologist, a psychiatrist, they don't even ask.
No, we have two in the state, I think, child psych.
Child psychiatrists, yeah. Um, one that I know of does not accept any insurance, so it's self-pay, and the retainer is $3,500, so it's, it's a dire situation, so just.
Um, so there is a bill, and I don't know if this really addresses, if I can find it, I just had it. It's a resolve to, where'd it go, where'd it go? So now I can't find it. If anyone else has anything, they will stay well, Tyler, go ahead.
Um, I have a question regarding students' right to education, there's a lot of bills circulating around the country around, you know, book banning, banning the teaching of certain subjects in schools, is there a lot of traction for that in the legislature? Or traction to kind of prevent or codify students' rights to learn all subjects in education?
I don't think there's a lot of push on, on either side on that, that, that's going to gain a lot of traction, Maine has a long history of local control in most areas of education, and I don't think there's a lot of push to either, unfortunately, from my perspective, codify what, that students have a right to learn, a broader range of things, or at the same time to, to ban certain subjects either, I, I don't think there's, there's much push to do anything on either side.
Okay.
So Tyler, just for the board's information, there is a, I think it's a senator from Louisiana that has introduced a Parents' Rights Bill, and I have a copy of that, if you'd like to see it, I will send it out to everybody, but at our MSBA board meeting on Saturday, we talked a lot about that, and what it means for, if it became a, a federal law, what it would mean for our district, and what we're doing right now is looking down through all of the bulleted points on that Parents' Bill of Rights, is what it's called, and just looking at what we as a district already do, and we're in really good shape, so I mean, we're, we're really, you know, just about everything that's on there for a parent Bill of Rights, we already do here in this district, so I don't know that it's going to, that it's going to have a huge impact, and I don't think it's really going to, it's not going to change things that we do, because again, it goes back to local control, and that's one thing that we really, like I've said before, we keep bringing up, you know, all of these bills, these are the bills that are in the Education Department, in the Education Committee right now, and a lot of them take away local control, which is why the MSBA opposes a lot of them, because we want to continue that local control, so I'll share that Parents' Bill of Rights with you all, so that you can take a look at it and see where, where we're at, so that, that's, that's what I know about it.
Kathy, can I, is it okay if I put in a plug? So one of the things as a superintendent, that I, I worry about a little bit is our facilities. The, the building you're sitting in right now is 20 years old, and that's our newest building. Our high school's close to 50 years old, our elementary schools are all 50-plus years old, so one of my concerns is, we work really hard at upkeeping our facilities, but at some point, our facilities really don't match what the needs of the students are, so being able, like, if you go into our elementary schools, our, our elementary schools especially, we've cut up a lot of rooms to make spaces and all that kind of stuff, but it's really not great educational space, based on the needs of our students, and I'm not going to throw out the consolidation, but I'd really like to see the state sooner rather than later, get another list together of schools that need renovation or possibly new construction, so that's kind of what I'm looking at over the course of the next five to 10 years, because that's how long it'll take to get a school built, even if you can get on the list, you're probably looking at five to 10 years minimum to be able to do that, so I'm just throwing that out as a superintendent, knowing what are, what are, a shape our facilities are in.
I, I completely appreciate your, your position on that, I was on the school board for a long time in, in Hollowell when it was SAD 16, and we were lucky enough, lucky enough to get a new school, because our old school had a really serious mold problem, and we had to close it, so it allowed us to bump up the list a little bit, or it would have been forever to wait for a new one, and it's, it's, it's an awful situation, you're right.
You're right, I used to work at Halldale Elementary School, and that's a beautiful elementary school that got built over there.
Well, I'm very proud, I was on the board when we built that, it's, it was a big accomplishment.
So that, that is something that we really are, it's a challenge that we'll be facing, we're already starting to face that, the, the whole construction and, and renovation of our buildings, so.
Yeah, and I can, I can ask members of the Education Committee if there's any plan, the biggest thing they could do with that, I think, is put more money into the revolving renovation fund to, to get it a little less stagnant. I don't know what plans there are for that, but I can try and find out.
Thank you, I appreciate that.
Jay, I think that LD 193.
I was going to say, there is a bill.
Chris, okay, good.
Yeah, it's an act to provide excess general fund revenue to the school revolving renovation fund and the education stabilization fund, thank you, Kelsey.
Good, and you guys know, you're not alone, I mean, it's all over.
Right, right. Go ahead.
I know that one of the problems with school renovations is, if you're a district who is responsible and maintains and upkeeps your buildings, you never get high enough on the list to be considered. Having worked in a district where we let buildings fall apart, so that we could get moved up the list, was worthwhile, but it's very detrimental to the whole experience of education, so really, something needs to be done in the way the state looks at how we put people on the list, not people, but districts on the list. Being responsible and then being penalized for that, and having buildings that are 70 years old is silly.
Thank you. Thank you. Anyone else? Anyone else? So we do have a few other things that we just want to mention. We've already mentioned bus drivers, we've already mentioned school construction. The other thing that is a challenge for us, or will be a challenge for us, is certification. If I understand this correctly, and I think I do, the new certification categories are K through five. No, K through six, and then seven through twelve, and then five through eight in a specific content area. That has a huge impact on our district because of the way our middle school is, the, the structure of our middle school. And it's really going to negatively impact our district. And that, and we, we realize that those are for newly certified people that are just coming out of college, or, you know, getting newly certified, but we're, we're really concerned about the, the teachers shortage that we already have. And now putting this certification, it, it, they, it just seems like it's going to make it even harder for us to get teachers that are certified in the, you know, the way that we need them to be. So that, that's something that's going to be a challenge for us.
That, that's something, I hadn't heard about that, so that's, that's good to know. Because I know you are, I mean, everybody is going to be facing a teacher shortage, and you've seen the charts that show how many are retiring and are, or just leaving.
Absolutely.
The, the burnout from COVID has been terrible. My wife's a teacher at Helen Thompson School in West Gardner. And the district gave her a year's leave of absence because it was very stressful, and so she has worked this last year, loved it as a school librarian, but unfortunately, that doesn't.
Right. And there are some other bills as well that are going in front of the committee about accepting certification from other states. And there's been some talk about, you know, that would be a really good thing, except we want to make sure that the states that are certifying people are at the same expectations that our state is. So, you know, it's another way to bring more people in to, to address the, the teacher shortage, and it's not just teachers, it's staff, all, you know, all, the whole school, so that, you know, the whole district staff, so that's a big challenge that we've been facing. So the other thing is, there's the bill that would allow CTEs at middle schools, which I mean, I think we're all in favor of that. We think it would be a great idea to start, you know, some of those programs at middle school. Our question is, who's going to fund it? And I know there are some other schools in the area who have done that at middle schools and have had private funding, but you know, if this is going to become a a law, we would like to see where that money's going to come from. And it's important to us, because I think that's something that we really need to address, is, is getting more kids into those kinds of programs earlier. And then
And then we already
Oh, yeah. Just the fiscal, you know, how we balance our school budgets with the town budgets and all of that, that we're all paying for and trying to do the best that we can at all levels, so I think that's kind of covers everything that we wanted to mention, unless
I think so.
Unless anybody else has any, Mandy, go ahead.
I'd like to know where the minimum teacher salary one is. There's one to bring the minimum teacher salary up to fifty thousand in four years. Like to know. I'm not sure what LD it is, I apologize.
What is that?
That one, an act to provide that the minimum wage increases by rolling average of the cost of living like the previous three years. That might be, no, that's a different ones.
Yeah, I know there is one to bring it up to fifty thousand, I don't know the details about it.
So, let me see.
That would also have to be, I think, John, that the paid for by the state.
Yeah, for start.
For, for a while, until it gets, becomes into the contracts and all that. Because it's, that's a huge expense, or
Yeah, that's a ten thousand dollar increase over four years, so that could be
Yeah, and that, and that's, that's not just for starting teachers, I mean, once you start that at the bottom, you've got to go all the way up in scale. So it's not, it's not just, oh, we'll just, you know, increase though, okay, it's, it's ten sixty-four. An act to increase minimum teacher salary.
Okay.
And just for your information, MSBA opposed that, because we just don't know where the money's going to come from at this point, you know, because there wasn't any guarantee that it was going to come from the state, so at this point. And keep in mind, these are all bills, and they're not laws yet, but I just like people to be aware of what's coming, and you know, once it, if it if it passes, then we'll we'll have some information on it.
There hasn't even been a, Paul McCarron on that bill yet, but Mandy, I think it'd be great to go on soon.
I'm not sure I oppose it. I just, I just worry about the number of years. And then being able to pass a budget.
Great points to bring up in your top spot.
I think, I think It's a great idea, but state needs to fund it. When the state passes these things, they need to fund it. It needs to come from everybody, not just the local towns.
I think they are looking at the matrix that impacts ED, the ED two seventy-nine. I think that's part of the LD of revamping the formula, is also looking at the matrix. It's a salary matrix in which they determine some of those costs and amounts that we get, and they are based on regions and things like that, so I think they are taking another look at that matrix as well, so hopefully that will help at some point, but not today.
Anyone else? No? Okay. So is there anything that you feel that either, is it Senator? Senator? Is there anything that you think that we should know about that? Or how you might be able to support us, or what we can do to help support you, what your, what your work is in the legislature? Oh. Oh, okay, okay. Okay. Did he say, did he have any comments or anything that he wanted to share? No, okay.
Well, no, as I say, I'm on the Health and Human Services Committee, so there's some overlap, but not really as much as you'd think, not as much as I, I actually honestly think there should be. I'm not saying it's necessarily a good idea, but I know there's states, like New Mexico has the Department of Young Children that handles education and healthcare and all the CDS stuff, and all the child protective and all that. And so there's other ways of looking at this sort of thing, and, but right now, there's not a lot of overlap between education.
Right.
CDS is close, but that's about it.
Yeah. Okay.
Okay, but I'm always, oh.
Just real quick, I wanted to put a number to your idea, Christine, so LD nine nine seven is the resolve to reduce workforce barriers for mental health professionals. That might be the one you'd tag to that with the info, Christine. You bet, but just to say if the MSBA, it doesn't show their position on your chart, but that's
Right now, we're just monitoring it, because we need more information. Because I think it just came out, and they haven't been a hearing on that one either yet, so there's also another one, but I I can get that to you later, if you want to. Betty?
We haven't heard from the town officials, the town select boards about any of their challenges.
Anything that you'd like
Kind of challenges?
Bob?
If you come out with any
Can you speak into the microphone?
Have you come out with any bu- budget figures yet?
Yeah, we're going to talk about that next. That's, that's next on the agenda, is the budget. And maybe then your challenges will come up. Anything that you, folks would like to ask either one of our legislators that, while they're here? All good? Thank, thank you again for coming. We really appreciate your, your time. We know you're pretty busy right now, so
But that's all right, I really appreciate the job, and, and this is part of it, and I, I like doing things like this, and you know how to, you guys know how to reach me, and if you want to share that information, I'm always glad to do what I can. Now, I'll try and get information on this, you've asked me a lot, so maybe a few days, but I'll
Okay, great, thank you very much, we appreciate it.
And again, please reach out anytime.
We will.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Coming. Kathy, thank you for sending that around today, it was a great chart.
Okay, next on the agenda.
Posted somewhere, so members of the public.
I want this that I have? With
With the agenda or something?
Probably. Yeah. The only, the only little bit of concern that I have is like, all is, all it says on this is it says what they are and how, what MSBA's position is, and there's no reason. And I just have a little fear that, and I'll just give you an example, the last one that we voted on was the just make sure I get the wording right, an act, an act to enact the Curriculum Transparency Act, and we were opposed to that. And not because we didn't want it to be transparent.
Because what it says, but does it link to the bills?
It does, if you, yes, you can link it, right.
Is just take that off. Like, I can take the call off and just
Just send the bill itself with the link. Yeah, just with the bill with the link. Okay, all right, that would be good, then we wouldn't have to worry about people saying why they opposed to that. Oh, right, yeah, okay, great, thank you. The up, updated one should be coming, I'm not, well, maybe, maybe tomorrow, maybe Friday. If you want to just hold off, because the, the Tuesday's meeting isn't on here yet.
There's no comment, I'm all aware. I have like ten of my emails already.
Where are we doing? Okay. Okay, anybody else? Okay, do we have any adjustments or additions to the agenda by the superintendent or the board? No? Okay, the next one is our action items, and do I have a motion to approve the minutes of March eighth, two thousand and twenty-three meeting?
I motioned to approve the minutes of March eighth, two thousand and twenty-three.
So it's been moved and seconded to approve the minutes of March eighth. Is there any discussion? Hearing none?
Alrighty, Kristen, you're first.
Sorry. Yeah.
David G?
Yes.
Annie?
Yes.
Tyler?
Yes.
Christine?
Abstained.
Kathy?
Yes.
Patty?
Yes.
Rebecca?
Yes.
Betty?
Yes.
Sean? Kelsey?
Abstained.
Uh, David T?
Yes.
And I think it's Esme come in.
Yes.
Thank you.
So I just want to ask those of you that abstained, was it because you were not at the meeting? Okay, thank you. In that past, minutes were accepted. Okay, next on the agenda is citizen comments that are not budget-related. Do we have anybody that has signed up? Leslie, oh, Leslie, oh, Leslie, you're up.
Is this on? Is it on? Okay. Leslie Marco from Mount Vernon. So prior to budget discussion, I want to thank Sean Rodrick for, for speaking up on the legislative piece. As a citizen, I'm trying to learn and understand sort of how we can connect and get informed and educated on things around our school, things around our board, things around the board committees. I know that Sean's on the Communication Committee, because I can find that easily online. A little disappointed, there hasn't been a meeting for the past few months. But some of that is sort of what I'm hoping to understand a little bit further, that some of the information, if we want to engage more of our community, more of our citizens, we're very much speaking on their behalf when we talk about mill rates, and we talk about the students, and I think the easier and the more accessible we can make information, meetings, committee meetings, legislative bill proposals, what's going on around the state, very accessible in very few clicks to the members of our community, the better the chance that they have to raise even just questions, or to figure out how to participate in a process, whether, like, I'm learning about, you know, testimony, or learning about what, what the timing is, even for when bills maybe come from a proposed state, maybe move forward, to be able to find out who the right people are to ask about how to get involved. Because one of the bigger that's going to come is that the cycle that all citizens are aware of is when we vote on a budget, and that's about the one thing that probably the majority of citizens do know about, because it's very clear, it's very public, even though it's still very muddled in its details. So the communication and accessibility to information to the members of our community that allow them to figure out in what little or significant way they can be informed, be educated, and then participate, I think is the best way to get more support for you as board members and committees and administration staff. So that's my pre-budget citizen comment. Thank you.
Thank you.
Is it okay? Leslie?
Yeah.
The next Communication Committee meeting is January, or excuse me, January, I went backwards. March twenty-one at six o'clock at the central office again, so
Okay, great, and I'll amend my, my comment that maybe there was a meeting, but there's just no posted minutes.
There are no posted
With no posted minutes, I don't really know if there was a meeting
Yeah.
or not.
Yeah, there was one on the twenty-eighth, but the minutes aren't out, and part of that's my fault, I just finished them today, to be quite honest, so
And, and the agenda usually includes the Zoom link.
Yeah.
So the agenda would offer the upfront insight. An additional idea was to post on only one avenue sort of of communication, I know is Facebook and the RSC thirty-eight Avenue for Communication, and they're very good at letting us know when school board meetings are coming, but I'd like that to include every committee meeting that is also on the horizon for that same population of audience to see the same thing and have the option to participate in the same way. Thanks.
Thank you. Okay, moving on to the budget workshop.
Budget workshops, so I'm actually going to switch places and go over to the podium, and we're going to put up a slideshow, so make sure you can see that, and I know I'm kind of talking off to the side, but you guys are seeing me.
So as it's coming up on the screen, so what I'm going to do is talk a little bit about the ED, ED two seventy-nine. We were just talking about the funding formula. I wanted to be able to share that with you going forward. Just because we were talking about it, and we usually do that as part of what we do. And then when we get to updates, we'll talk about my administrative team meets weekly, and we are looking at various parts of the budget and making decisions and recommendations to the school board, so we'll get an update of that. We'll have a third draft summary of where we are with the budget right now. We will also do a first draft of the revenue areas, as well as a first draft of the local calculation, and then we'll take care of any answer, or excuse me, any questions and, and try to answer to the best of our ability any of the questions that come up. So having said all of that to you guys, we just, so again, we're all kind of talking the same language. The ED two seventy-nine is how the state allot money to schools, each school district. It is a little bit of a nebulous formula. I'm not going to pretend after five years I still understand it all. I'm slowly getting better with it, but it's, there are questions, I'll be right up front that I probably can't answer, but I'll do the best to, to get the information to you. So again, the basic ED two seventy, uh, two seventy-nine, the, it's broken into five parts. So section one, as you guys, some of you already alluded to, is student counts. So that's kind of what we'll do. I'll show you a snapshot of this year's in just a second to look at that. The other, the next part is operating costs, and everything that goes into that, again, I'm not going to read all of that to you. Section three is your other allig- other allocations, like special ed, transportation, retirement, debt service, and gifted and talented. Section four is the calculation of the required local contribution by municipality, and again, we'll talk about that. And section five is And section five is your total and adjustments. We are in a regional service center with Winthrop and RSU 2, so we get, that's one of the small adjustments that we have, and it ends up being just about $40,000. It's not a huge amount of money, but every little bit helps when you're talking about the budget, that's for sure. So let's take a look at the first part on the next slide here. So we're looking at enrollment here. So one of the things that you want to take a look at is that they use a rolling average here to come up with that number. So in, when you're looking at it this year, you can see in that second line that our number is 12, 1,200, and is it six or nine? I'm six, six, thank you. I always get it wrong, so. Just as a kind of comparison, we had an increase from last year in 35 students across the district. In 1920, or school year 20, our enrollment was 1,223. So even though our enrollment seems to be going up a little bit, it's still not at pre-pandemic levels. So it's kind of important to know that because again, your calculation depends on how many students you have in your district. Going to number two, which again, they talked about was valuation. Going forward, so going forward, looking at valuation across the four towns, their local contribution, as we talked about already, was, is 7.29 this year. Last year, it was 7.1. The year before that, which is 22, it was 7.26. So you can see the, that mill rate has kind of bounced up and down. I think, I don't want to speak for the state, but I think they were trying to look at a way to help schools and towns kind of take care of education through those pandemic years, and it appears to my eyes like they're kind of going back to, okay, the pandemic is over, so we're kind of moving back to this is what it should be. There's no state of emergency on anymore, so we're getting back to kind of normal, quote unquote, normal numbers going forward. I'm going to pause there for a second before we actually change the slide over for just a second. One of the really big things that has been significant for us is when you're looking at your student count, your free and reduced population actually gets an extra weight in the calculation. That free and reduced population is important. So to give you guys a little bit of just kind of information, this year, based in our October 1st numbers, we had 206 students that qualified for free and reduced lunch, so we get an extra weight for those 206 students when you do the calculation. That weight this year was 0.1822. So again, it's not huge, but that every little bit helps. To give you a little bit of perspective, though, in 2023, our free and reduced count was 341. We actually dropped 134 students on free and reduced, which really, really hurt us. The other piece is the extra weight last year for those students was .3122. So the rate was, you know, almost a third higher last year, and we had more students. This year, we have less students, and that weight has been reduced. Think I've got it written down somewhere. Pre-pandemic in 1920, we had 393 students that were doing free and reduced lunch, and the weight at that time was 0.15. So again, when you're looking at kind of returning to normal state numbers, it kind of looks like they're kind of getting back to normal when you look at that. But money-wise, between last year and this year, just on those student count numbers, we are down $262,000. So that free and reduced piece is really, really important to the district. So that is something that we have to work on going forward into next year. We can't change it now, but we are really going to have to look at that. So, you know, when people say, do I have to fill out this free and reduced lunch form? It helps us if they fill it out, and now there's a form that you can use from the state. If you don't want to just fill in the entire lunch form, there's actually a form that you can use that just says, this is kind of my socioeconomic bracket that we can then use to apply towards these numbers that we're talking about right now. Yeah, I'll pause there for a second, Kelsey, go ahead.
Yeah.
Yeah.
People aren't filling out forms because they get free lunch anyway.
Yeah, free lunches for everybody now, and yeah, I don't know, Patty, if that's what you were, okay, Sean, same thing?
Yeah. I have a different question. I'll let you.
Are you sure? I can pause there. I'm okay to do that. Okay. All right.
My question is, how many, how many families filled up?
Yeah. So I don't know the family number, but I can get that for you, okay? Yeah. Yeah, no, I agree with you 100% there.
It's got to be a parent.
Yeah.
I know everybody is already busy, but if you're talking a difference of $260,000, it would be worth it to pay somebody to contact all of the parents who don't return a form, to get a form.
Yeah.
Yeah. It's a cost benefit thing.
Yeah. For sure. No, that's a really good comment. Thank you. So I just wanted to share that with you guys, just to give you a little bit of perspective on how much that impacts the formula. So again, I'll leave this in just a second. So last year, we got $503,000 out of that. So again, it's worth it to, to invest in making sure we get accurate numbers, for sure. Okay, I'll stop there. I just, I thought that was an important piece that you guys, that I share with you guys. So then if we cross over and we're still talking about valuation, we go to the next slide. Your valuation is based on the previous year, so the contributions that they, they work on for everyone is based on 2022 valuation. So this isn't even the new, we're not even going off 2023. But I, we tried to highlight them, and again, we can make sure that this is posted online, so people can see that a little bit more clearly. So one of the things that's important, though, is that we do have students that may live in one town but actually go to school in another town for various reasons. So when we are calculating this, we always make sure that all elementary school students are placed in the town that they're coming from, not necessarily the town that they are going to school in, for lack of a better way to say that. That accounts, there's 31 students in our district at the elementary level that actually go to school in a different town that they live in, but we make sure for valuation purposes that they are tagged in the right town that they live in. Superintendent agreements are not charged to towns. That's really important. I know every year that I've been here, that's been a little bit of a topic of conversation. Now, superintendent agreements can be K to 12, but they don't count towards the town. So no, no town is being charged for a student coming from, and I'm just making up a town, so please, no, we're not charging you because we've got a Winthrop student there. So what you have to think is the money follows the student, so that amount that's allocated through tuition for Winthrop, that money actually flows right directly to us in RSU 38. So just so you know, we have 45 superintendent agreements, which is a number that we're kind of proud of because people want to come to Miranda Cook, so. But it is something to think about because we get the tuition cost. We don't get what the per pupil spending cost is from there. Then the other thing that I don't have on there, but I want to just point out, is that we also have 70, 76 students that are here on tuition agreements. Most of those are coming from Fayette, we're a choice school for Fayette, so a good part of those 76 students are actually Fayette students, although we have a couple from a few other areas, but that's the bulk of them is from Fayette. So when you look at that, what does that mean for about what evaluations look like? So as you can see, each town went up approximately 7%. Some went up a little more than 7%, and some are just barely getting to 7%. Going, you know, when you're looking at that, when it comes to valuations, so. So then, if you'll go to the next slide, so.
When we are doing our calculations for the town, for the town hall, remember by the charter agreement for RSU 38, it's 50% student count and 50% property valuation, and it's a rolling three-year average, how we get that. So just so that you guys kind of know.
So again, just so that you guys kind of remember, that's what the calculation is. So when we present in just a few more minutes of what the local contribution looks like, that's the formula that's used. It's 50% student count, 50% property valuation. So last year, when you get all of the numbers at the end, you, superintendents, business managers always go, okay, what's the difference from the total number last year to the total number this year? In '23, we were up $363,000, almost $364,000 there. The state contribution this year, we are only up $27,000. So again, dramatic differences as to what's going on with state contributions as you're looking at that. Okay, so then, I'm throwing a lot of information at you, so this resource page again is a really good place. I checked all of these links today to make sure that they are kind of live. You can get, there's an infographic that you can scroll through that will explain the essential programs and services model. There's also school funding basics, and I put in the direct YouTube link that was provided by the state. It's a couple of years old, but again, not much has changed, so it's, it's pretty accurate. You can see the state valuations for any base, almost any year by going to that link. You can see the ED 274 in all its glory. It's about what, six or seven pages long here? So it gives you a chance, you can look at every single year, so you can compare kind of what's going on from year to year. You've also got a research, a resource page from main.gov that again, gives you more information about the essential program and services model that they use for funding. So we know that funding is kind of on the agenda when the legislature is looking at it. So here are some fantastic links that are easy to access and kind of easy to understand as much as possible, although.
These are all on the website, right?
These will all be up on the website as well. Yes, yep, for sure. So, so that's just a quick, like, that's a very, very short, quick explanation. Just wanted you guys to see a couple of the highlights or lowlights, however you want to phrase it as you're looking at that. So what we're going to do next is actually, I'm going to invite up Principal Delmar and Diane McGregor. They're going to talk a little bit about some of the proposed changes that we made to the, to the budget last week. And then we'll, from there, talk about the third draft, and then we'll get into those other revenue and local contribution sheets. So Principal Delmar, if you'd like to come up, and.
Super excited to talk even to more people in the room than just the board. As you heard last week from Tina Brackley, we talked a little bit about some of the discussions we've had as an administrative team on what we can cut out from the budget, even though it's hard, and it's been a challenge, and we've worked really carefully together to kind of flush that out. So tonight, I'm going to talk to you a little bit about the Math Ed Tech 3 position at Mount Vernon, and I'll give you a little bit of history on it, so you understand that. So about four years ago, the Maine Department of Education notified Title I Tier 3 schools about innovative grant opportunities. And in that, it's very different than the typical Title I grants in that they were looking for innovative practices, and they were going to grant those to schools and allow them some leeway in what they were going to do, different than I said in typical regulated Title I funds. So at that time, Nancy Harriman, the curriculum coordinator, and I wrote and applied for a grant. There were 68 schools in Maine that were eligible for the innovative grants. 12 schools were awarded money, and two of those schools were Mount Vernon and Wayne. And the combination of that grant for over three years for the two schools was $260,000. So we were really proud that we were able to apply and receive those grants and use them both at Mount Vernon and Wayne. So for Mount Vernon, that grant funded the Math Ed Tech 3 position in an iPad. So we've been doing that. This is the last year of that grant. We went into that grant knowing that it expired in three years, and like I said, it certainly has been positive and impactful in our school. But again, we knew from the beginning of this process that there was a number of years that we would be allowed to have that grant. We've used it, and it's over. So as part of our discussion, we realize that's not something that will be funded moving forward.
And I'll invite Technology Director Diane McGregor to talk to us about the Ed Tech position at the high school.
Hi, we have Principal Michelle LaForge with us as well. So just talking about that position of the Technology Media Center Ed Tech, we are trying to find lots of little ways and big ways to like shift and move things around so that we can fill that position in an alternative way. So that is going to come out of this part of the budget, so that we can do that.
Priority. Thank you.
So as you can see from what we've got up there, so we reduced about $109,000, which up to this point gives us a grand total of $383,000. We are meeting again this Friday and the Friday after, and we will be bringing forth more recommendations. We have some fairly big items that we will be talking about over the next two weeks to bring forward to the board as well. So what we're going to do next is share the first draft, or excuse me, the third draft of what this budget looks like. So I'm going to hang out here for just a minute until we get to the question to answer session. Give that a chance to get around to people. Of course you can.
Free, free pay, that's what's been cut from the original.
Yes, from the first draft, yes. Thank you for asking that. So as that continues going around, one of the things that, that I have to acknowledge is that when we started the, talking about the budget back in December of this school year, we talked about, could we hit the 1% to 2% mark? That we, we always try to kind of have a target as an A-team of what we want it to look like. And right off the top, as we started, as soon as I put that out there, I realized that was kind of an unattainable target, to be quite honest. Because we know that energy costs. because we know that energy costs have skyrocketed. We also know that the cost of materials and what you can buy with your money through inflation has greatly changed as well. So when you look at that, you're probably going to get a little bit of a sticker shock, but keep in mind of the times that we're in and what we're looking at. So everybody kind of goes to, okay, what's the bottom line right now? So if you go down to the grand total column, which is at the very bottom, and you follow it across, right now we're up a little over one point seven million dollars, which equates to an eight point five percent increase to the budget. So that is, as you're looking at that, just something to consider. Remember the required mill rate? So we have to, and we're going to look at that in just a minute and talk about that. But remember, that doesn't include the six hundred and eight thousand dollars that's been shifted over that we have no control over. So keep that in mind as you're looking at it. And again, that's why we're meeting as an A-team, taking things very kind of slowly, but working through the cuts that we know we need to make. So we're trying to be very thoughtful, and it may not look like a lot right now, but trust me, we're going to get there as we're continuing through looking at that, so just so that you know from there. So eight point five is not where we're going to end in terms of additions to the budget from there. So having said that, if you then turn the page, this is the first draft of the revenue side of the budget. So remember, basically what you're looking at on the first page is your expenditures, what we want to spend. And then we have to look at the revenue side of the budget to see kind of where we fall, what monies are we taking in from that? And I'm going to pause there, Mandy, is there anything you want to add to that or talk about there?
Somebody asked.
Right, yeah. And again, this is first draft, so I don't want anyone to go, oh my, you know, this is first draft. This is going to change, but we knew that that you guys were going to be here tonight. So we thought it appropriate to at least make sure the first draft was in front of you guys going forward here, so. So again, if you look at the bottom line and you're looking at where are we? That increase is one point seven mil, and then what the total cost would be? And then you can see what our revenues, what revenues we're generating there. And then if you go to the third page, again, this is a first draft, but using that formula that I talked to you about, the fifty percent student count, fifty percent valuation, this is how it all kind of shakes out across each individual town. So you can see it as a total for the district and then broken up across towns. Notice that we on that second line highlighted the required mill rate. And then down at the bottom, the total local contribution there, so. Again, we know we have work to do here, so that's what we're we're taking a look at. There's a lot of information here, so. I'm going to stop there, change places, and then we can start discussion, questions, all that kind of stuff going forward.
So are there any questions or comments from the board?
Because I'm brand spanking new, and I've never seen anything like this before, except for on the admin side. It's very different, but I just, I just don't know why what the local dollars contributed per student, it's different per town. And again, this is, you know, a newbie question, but what, like, how is that calculated? Why is that different?
Because the the formula that we use is based off of fifty percent student count, fifty percent valuation. And you have less students, just for example, in Wayne, because Wayne's is significantly higher. Wayne has higher property valuation, much less student count. And so if you actually break it down to per pupil, that's the amount that they're paying per student.
So that's for fifty percent property valuation, fifty percent student count in numbers.
Yeah, okay.
Perfectly explained, thank you so much, appreciate it.
You're welcome.
Any other questions from the board, David?
I'm not a newbie and I still don't understand. I'm just taking Wayne as an example, so. Near the top of that percentage increase required, local contribution, nine point two four percent. And then down post bottom, the local percent, seven point three four percent. Are those added together, and that's the, that would be the total that the town is paying in addition? Or the comparison of those, are they just separate or?
So the. Well, the seven point two ninety three mill. It does not, because it's the, again, it's that fifty fifty contribution amount that you have to take into consideration. So it's not, it's not just the two added together.
Thank you, okay. But it's not that, even though it's a nine point two four percent up top, it's not going to be cut to seven point three four percent.
Right, the nine point two four percent increase is the increase just over the required mil amount from last year to this year.
Can I ask another question?
Sure.
So, oh yes, the microphone. Hello, how are you? I don't, this makes me nervous, sorry. If we look at this resident-only form down here, and it says that the local percentage increase, oh, I see, never mind, I just answered my own question, thank you so much, appreciate it, thank you.
Any other questions or discussion from the board or from the town?
This is Sean, I have a question, these numbers that are based on salary, they don't include current salary negotiations that are going on, right? Are these?
We're not in negotiations.
They're not.
We do know the salaries for next year, so that is factored into this budget.
Okay, perfect, thank you.
Yeah. FY twenty-five will be different.
Yeah, figured it out.
Any other questions?
I have one.
Go ahead.
Just because I haven't read it closely enough. So there's the amount that that we pay that's for the EPS formula, and then there's the amount that we agree to spend over and above that by local decision. Where is that amount listed on here?
The the additional local dollars, is that what you're asking? So that's that six point seven, that's kind of like in the right in the middle of the page.
On which page?
Sorry, this, this one.
Local dollar.
It's also on the revenue side. It is near the bottom, it's a third, the third amount up from the bottom in the right-hand column. So the six point seven roughly is the additional local dollars.
I'm not seeing a six point seven.
The six point seven is on the.
Six point, it's six million, seven hundred and eleven, four thirty-one.
Oh, I was looking for a percentage, so sorry.
Oh, sorry, six point seven million, I can do now. Yeah.
Yeah. Okay. So if I'm looking, I understand the district is important, but since I'm from Reed Field, I'll look at the Reed Field column. So are we looking at a eight point six seven percent increase? Is that the line?
I'm sorry, eight, one, two, three, what town? Point zero three. Yeah, the total increase is fifteen point zero three.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yep.
Great. Okay, so compared to what we paid last year, we're looking at a fifteen percent increase.
That is correct.
On the first draft.
Okay. Okay, because I'll tell you that we're on, I don't know, like draft twelve or something of our municipal budget, and we're at one percent, maybe one point two. So fifteen is hard to swallow, and we've had comments from our citizens who always confuse how this works, because your budget comes in my town budget, not mine, but our town budget. And they're, why are you going to put taxes up six or seven percent? Well, we're not. The part I can control on the select board is like one percent. And we always try to say, and the county controls this percentage and the school controls this percentage, but it, I don't think you get a lot of that feedback, because the people who come to your budget meetings are the people who really care about education, and they want to have the best for their kids, and so they come and they support the vote. And then we take a lot of blackboard, so fifteen percent is a lot to swallow.
Oh, go ahead, sorry. I just, fifteen percent is a lot, it's the first draft. And I, and I, and I know that you will agree with me when I say thank you so much to the administration for going back and looking at all of the things that we know that you still really want to keep in the budget and making really tough decisions. I mean, I, I have not, as a board member, gotten any feedback about, you know, positively toward a budget or, I mean, nobody's calling me, so I guess that's a good thing. But I would actually like to hear from people, I, and I understand how that works at the at the town level. But I just would encourage anybody with criticism to like kind of take a look around. And we are all, if we don't support schools, there are implications for that, that will ultimately not be good for towns and for the area. And I know you think you know that, and everybody kind of knows that, but it's, I think, worth having that conversation with constituents when they have those concerns. And I, and I, it's not lost on me that there are a lot of people who just simply can't afford higher taxes. So I really get that too, but first draft, and they're working hard.
Any other questions or comments, Sean?
Well, I think for a broader discussion, if we want to have all these schools, I mean, we have a principal for sixty kids or sixty-four kids at a hundred and somewhat thousand dollars. That's, if you want to talk about cutting the budget, I'm not going to vote some of the increases. It's all about every student, to me, having the same education if you go to school in Reed Field, if you do in Manchester, you do in Mount Vernon, or you live in Wayne. And so unless people want to have that discussion and you want to fill this room, you will when you talk about starting closing schools. Grandma and grandpa will be mad because it's their school day, when to. Mom and dad will be mad because kids, God forbid, have to go five miles down the road. But that's the increase. I mean, since I started on this board, we went from two principals in our elementary schools, because it's not the right thing to do, to every elementary school. That's hundreds of thousands of dollars, the increase, because we want to have a school for sixty kids, forty kids, three hundred kids, whatever number kids. And those kids all deserve the same education. And that's a decisions that adults need to make, that they don't want to make. And when you have that discussion, their phone starts ringing, and your phone start, you start getting. But that's how you start making savings, is you consolidate schools. And there's examples around the state where that's happened successfully. You look at SAD seventy-four, where I went to school, all the kids go to one school now, and there's a savings. But it took a long time, there was two votes on that when I was in school for it to happen, and it never happened. Now those kids in elementary school are learning, are learning foreign languages and stuff. It's a pretty poor area, but they have more opportunities than some of our kids do, because we're choosing to leave these schools open, and that's where your increase comes from. So if you want to help on lowering the cost, help on spreading that message.
What's that message like now? Like, is it dead, is that message dead, or is that like, can we break that up? I mean, I, you know, I'm just asking.
People that I talk to, I'd be willing to do it, but wait till my kids die.
Right, right, yeah.
I mean, I know it was discussed, maybe.
Thank you, thank you, Dennis.
Oh, Steve Hayes was still on the school board back when we discussed it last, and you know, it was when we all, our towns signed over our elementary schools to the school district. And we became a school district, but we really aren't. We're really still four separate places until you come to, is it fifth grade now?
Sixth grade.
Sixth grade. And you know, that's one of the reasons you become a district, is to consolidate services. And it does, there is something you give up, but as Sean said, there can be things you can gain. And I think if you're going to talk about, and I know this is the first draft, so, you know, you're not going to get it down to one percent, certainly. But I think that is something that should come back up and become a priority of the board to at least address it and have the towns respond. It doesn't mean you have to spend hundreds of thousands of dollars studying it to find out the people don't want it again. But if people are faced with these kinds of increases, let's give them the choice. We can, we can talk about consolidating, or I don't really like to call it closing schools, because you're not sure that's what you're going to do. You may just reapportion how kids, you know, maybe you have a K-three school, and you still have your schools open, but you just have different grade levels. There are lots of ways to do it, but I think it's, it would be really beneficial to give folks the option to have their voice heard again.
And we talked about getting new buildings, well, if you look at the schools in the state that have got new buildings, there are schools that are consolidated, because they want to, the state's not in the business of building schools for under less kids.
Go ahead. Yeah, he's the mic.
I'm just wondering what the state average student rate is. Is there an average student daily rate?
The, you mean the current tuition rate, it is actually on the bottom.
Not, no, not the tuition rate, I'm talking about the state. What is the, the average student daily amount? I mean, the state has.
I'm not sure, I'd have to look into that, I'm not sure there is a set rate, because there's so many things that go into.
Per student, per student amount.
Yeah, there's so many things that go into that, because it varies by community, because you have some communities that don't get, they get the minimum state amount because they have a higher property valuation and they don't need the funds. So I'm not sure the state breaks it down that way, I'd have to look into that.
Yeah, I, I'm pretty sure they do calculate a, an average. And I know some towns are able to pay more than what that rate is. I just was wondering what what that rate was, so I could compare it to what we have.
We can, we can find that information out.
Can I do one more, is that okay? Jay, item, or anyone really, Article ten, this operation maintenance plan, does that include that sort of like buildings and grounds as well? So it's the largest percentage increase in the entire thing is reflected in that? I just want to make sure I understand that correctly.
Yeah, and that is all of our, so our casualty and liability insurance, we were told to budget a twenty-five percent increase. That's also your heating cost, electricity, all of that, but also it's the SRO.
Yeah, right, yeah, I just, it just, talking about things, facilities, maintenance, it seems. Yep, right, yeah. I just, I just, talking about things, facilities, maintenance, it seemed like an appropriate time to bring that up. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions or comments?
I just want to say good luck. Just as we are, I don't know how many, what iteration are we on? Four, something?
Somewhere.
Yeah, we had a four-hour budget meeting on Monday, so we get it. And I think, you know, I just, I, I know how hard it is and I value all of, all the services that schools provide to not my kids, your friends' kids, everybody's kids. So, but yeah, good luck.
Don?
I just think we're going to have to look at last year's rate, because I don't think all the figures are in for this year's for the kids. So, you know, it's just comparatively speaking, I guess, per year.
Just a quick question.
Go ahead.
So on the first page, the 8.5%, as you said, it's not really 8.5, because it's 608, it's been shifted from the state over to us, but that's not even the, I mean, it's up like 11. I can't do the math in my head, but it really is up more like 10, 11, 11.9. Okay.
So as we go forward, we will keep pushing you guys the updates as we have them, so that you guys are aware of what's going on. And please, as you guys are looking at things, if you have any suggestions or have any questions, Mandy and I are always available. We'll make ourselves available to talk with you. So don't be afraid to reach out, so that we can work together, because that's important for us, that we work together with you guys.
So if something needs a period to town managers.
Yes, yeah. So, go ahead, Sean.
I have a request. Can we get this information before the meeting? Because like, this is a lot for us. It's a lot to try to digest and ask the appropriate questions. So can we get this like on your meeting on Friday? Could we get it like maybe Tuesday? So we can look at it 24 hours in advance?
We will try.
These are some serious decisions.
Yeah.
I'm already getting messages about, why are we cutting in ed tech? Is there anything that we can do to save it from Mount Vernon parents, to be honest?
I have one more.
Go ahead.
I don't, I don't know if it's a question or comment, maybe question and comment. So I don't think consolidating, going back to consolidating, sorry, necessarily means we need a whole brand new school for now, or maybe in the next few years. I think everybody sees those dollar signs, brand new school, big bill. But I think that there's got to be some way to evaluate the schools that we have. I don't know if there's somebody we could potentially hire or somebody.
Actually, when you, when you start the process of renovation or new construction, the very first step is an assessment of all of your buildings.
So if we did that now, it would not be wasted.
Right.
Right?
Right, yes. So just so you know, I was actually bringing that to the facilities committee, which got canceled yesterday because of a snowstorm. So we'll be talking about that on Tuesday. And I've already reached out to, we worked on the bond with Oak Point, who can provide that. So I've already reached out and made a connection. So we'll, I'll work with the facilities committee and then we'll be reporting back about that afterwards.
Yeah.
You must have been on the same wavelength.
Thank you.
Leslie, your name was on the list for budget comments. Did you want to say anything else?
Yeah, I was just disappointed. I'm not that good at things.
Are you good? Sean, did you want to say anything else?
Follow across that.
Thank you.
Leslie Marco Malvern. So one of my first questions, I think I alluded to the first time, is this, this does seem like a lot. I'm glad Mr. Price did call out, because if the towns are only seeing the third draft of the budget, and I got to peel back and see first and see second and catch my note to realize where the SRO was sitting. I want to make sure that folks did hear that, though, because that was the biggest increase on that, on that summarized budget, and that that is where the SRO is currently positioned, just so that, I want to make sure folks heard it and it wasn't skimmed over really quickly.
And that stands for School Resource Officer, yeah?
That is correct.
Thank you so much.
Yes. Okay, so, but the second is just in understanding, when does a full itemized budget get, become available? Because as we talk about how difficult this all is, if you really don't have everything available to you, how can you potentially come up with newer creative ideas or suggestions for discussion to figure out a different approach or slant to take at being able to accomplish whatever the budget reduction or, or goals really are? I've been digging, I've been listening, I've been here. I, so that's, that's a first question, and I still completely appreciate that there's drafts of things that go through, but when you're at that high level, and I appreciate all the work that's gone into slides and presentations, but that still is then just a little extra information that's not itemized in a summary, how do you get deeper into that to really be able to understand the full picture? So that's like one, one question. The second is, I did happen to be able to go and find easily last year's document that's related to what you've handed out to the towns now. And I just want to be sure that maybe I did or didn't understand how it sort of works, because in last year's the very top section of the same report that's in front of everybody today, it had listed the 2021 property revenue services valuation in the 2020 property services valuation. And on today's, it's citing 2021 with a different number than it cited for 2021 last year. I mean, it's, it's showing on today's report that 2022 is the number from last year cited for 2021. So I just don't know if there's a point when something is a draft or the way things roll that, I just want to, I have the question and I hope it's just that I don't understand. Or if it really is a misplacement of numbers, that that changes what we're asking and proposing to towns to look at just a little bit differently.
I can review that and get back to you.
Okay, awesome. And that, that was, those were my things.
Great, thank you. There's no one else on the list. Anyone else? From board? Anyone else from the town boards? Any comments, questions?
Thank you for having us.
Thank you for coming.
Thank you.
We appreciate it.
Districts are willing to do this, so it's really, even if nothing changes, it's just nice to have a reward.
Thanks for having us and all the work you're doing for our kids. I'll thank all of you for coming. We appreciate one more night of meeting. So this was not four hours, I hope. Anything else from the board on this topic? Tyler, not
Yeah, I'm still here. Sorry, I'm like trying to do class at the same time. I think we've done our norms very well tonight. We've been respectful with all of our guests and to each other and having an open and accepting dialogue, and I think we did a great job.
Thank you, Tyler, for keeping an eye on that. We appreciate that. We have a motion for adjournment. All those in favor of a journey?